Could I make a little call though? Bryce?
Here.
Budson?
Here.
Eshman?
Here.
George?
Here.
Hayden?
Robinson?
Here.
Skornikoff?
Here.
And could I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add resignation under new business.
And the other discussion? All right, so that will be C. I'm sorry.
Or we can just make it A, just put everything down because I would think that should be one of the first things for new business.
Yeah, we'll just keep it D and put in new business D and add a device. Oh my goodness. We're just going to keep going now.
Oh yeah.
One more time, item G. Thank you. We'll add that on there, new business G. Are we good? Uh, register anything else? All right, so we have a motion to approve as amended. This is a call. I don't think we should have that.
I don't worry, we have a amendment.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven oh. Thank you. Next is the council minutes of the regularly scheduled meeting, March 25th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the village council regular meeting minutes of March 25th, 2019.
Support.
All right. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next up is the minutes for the special workshop meeting, which was March 28th, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the village council's special meeting workshop minutes of March 28th, 2019.
All right, motion by council meetings, supported by Councilman Eshman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries as well. Our last is the special workshop meeting of April 8th, and that's also 2019.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2019.
Support.
All right, I was going to say, motion by Councilman Skornikoff, supported by Councilman Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries as well, seven zero. And our items, excuse me, six will be the acceptance items, and included we have the building department report, our ordinance violation report, and the board minutes that would include the planning commission, oh I'm sorry, the planning commission did not meet, the downtown development authority, and the Brandon Township, and there are two in here for the township. And that leaves us with item seven, our dispersments.
I'd like to make a motion to, let's see, let's do the man.
Seven ten.
Yeah. It's twenty five eight seventeen thirty nine.
I'd like to make a motion, there was a, just a couple areas on this that they had been confirmed, so the dispersment report needs to be amended by the seven dollars and ten cents, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the dispersments, the time period ending April 15th, 2019, in amount of twenty five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and thirty nine cents.
Support. Eight seventeen, you said?
Yes, twenty five eight seventeen thirty nine.
What was the, what has the?
Line item eleven, the check was actually ninety two twenty six, and line item seventeen, the check was actually eighty seven sixty.
Okay. Thank you for your indication. How did we, how did you pick those up there? How?
Because I went through the, the check registry and the general entries with the dispersment report, and those were two that were discarded.
Was it helpful having the check numbers on the report?
Very helpful.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you, Village Staff.
Thank you.
So we have a motion on the table, looking for support for the dispersment.
Support.
For the, around the corner, by Robinson. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you. With the corrected amount. All right. And Liz, and we have a call, real call time, please. Budson?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornikoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Next up is the treasurer's report. And I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month ending March 31st, 2019, as presented.
Support.
Seven oh?
Support.
Thank you. All right, motion by Councilman Bryce, supported by Councilman Budson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Item number nine will be our public comments, and at this time it is agenda meetings only, so if you would like to please step to the podium, feel free. Thank you. Number ten will be our consent agenda, and this one will include two special event permit requests. We have the VFW Memorial Day Parade, which will be May 27th, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., and we'll hear a little more about that in a bit. We also have our DDA Spring Tech Garden Show, which will be May 18th, and that is seven to three p.m.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Skornikoff, supported by Councilman Eshman. And we have a vote, it's in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And we'll start with trustee updates. Mark, do you want to start us off?
I don't have anything from last month, so. The fire authority board. Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, I spoke with Fred, and they're gearing up for the summer programs now. Everything from soccer to T-ball, basketball, baseball is all starting up either this week with practices or next week. He did want to mention that total registrations for spring activities are up 10% from what they were last year, and the creepiest years, they would have been a 5% and 5%. So over the last three years, they're up 20% of registrations from what they were three years ago. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, the planning commission, we did not meet this month, so there's no updates from the planning commission other than there is, we did get a request for a rezonia, 300 south property, that's the old school that was purchased, and we now have a resounding request there, and that will be, there will be a public hearing on the same night as the planning commission meeting, which is, what day is that? May, first Tuesday?
Seven.
Seven, yeah. So it'll be on May 7th, there'll be a public hearing for the resounding request.
Thank you.
It's good to see that moving forward on that property.
I have double the report on the road. As far as the personnel committee, I know in lieu of something that's been brought up later on, I think we need, the three of us need to meet as soon as possible. That's all I've got to say about it right now.
Nothing? Anything for me? Um, the DDA, we did have our joint meeting, and we thank everybody who attended that. Would like to congratulate Hill Decor and It's the Little Things. On Saturday, we had a ribbon cutting for Hill Decor and the one-year anniversary of It's the Little Things, so we encourage you to visit those downtown businesses. And also, the Main Street Awards will be coming up on May 9th, and we did have that included in our packet. If you're interested, let Matt Jenkins know, and I hear they're up for a family awards.
We applied for six.
For six different, there might be an option for six different awards. All right. And next we have number twelve, our new business, and the first thing is our charter franchise agreement.
Simply put, this is a, is a re-upping of the every 10 years charter franchise agreement, there's no real changes to it. I am kind of shocked that we actually got it with all legislation starting to go through right now, and if I was a betting man, I don't know that I would see the end because there's a big push right now at eliminating franchise fees by the different cable companies to make them competitive with satellite, that all their competition, so.
Competitive meaning they're going to pass on those dollars to the residents?
Oh, well, they pass on, what they're saying is, what they're saying is, what the cable companies are saying is, they're kind of forced to do that as they pass them on to the, the residents that pay the bill and the cable, where if you have satellite, you don't have cable fees, franchise fees. So the cable companies are saying they're at a distinct 5% competitive disadvantage because they're forced to collect 5% from their people, either customers, so that's the competitive argument. The reality is that they're in a different ballgame because they have to put their service through our right-of-ways and different utilities, village property, in order to complete their things, their business. So what we're looking for simply is a reauthorization for village clerk to sign this agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize village clerk to sign the uniform video service local franchise agreement, as presented.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Budson, supported by Councilman Robinson. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries seven zero. Next up is the bridge grant resolutions.
Yes, there's a, as you recall, one of the first things that did last, in March of last year when we got here was, we put forth a grant for preventive maintenance on the bridges that we have in the village, and that grant would have took place in 2021, had we received it. We did not receive that grant, so what this is, is a basically going back to the well again, and the reason they said we didn't get feedback we got from the board, or I was able to get from the board, was basically they felt the project was too small, had about $70,000, so what we're doing is adding all three bridges, preventive maintenance, and that should, if you recall, they pay 95% of the, the funds to improve the bridge, we pay 5%, so this will kick it, if we're successful in getting the grant, this will be about a hundred and $10,000 project. Think we would get it at this point in time because we were one of the few who got denied for a PM project, and we were thinking about, our bridges are in good shape. We are scheduled, yet this summer, we're scheduling the inspection of the bridges, and that'll be about $1,200, but that was in the budget, so that'll be done sometime this summer. So what we're looking for is if we want to pursue this grant, we need resolutions, these three resolutions for each one of the bridges, in order to pursue the grant.
Whatever the matching?
Our match is only 5%, so be about probably roughly $7,000 preparing.
I got a question though, because it seems like there was a lot of work done on the Ball Street Bridge in Curlichey Creek, not too far back.
Yep.
Would that not be too far before that? The South Street Bridge in Curlichey Creek, so not exactly sort of repairs and maintenance, are they?
Riprap, the decking on the bridge itself would be typically the one bridge, and a man of disadvantage, one of the bridges, as you recall, last year was only, it was only like $8,000 worth of repair for like better, and then it was just simply the riprap, which is that erosion protection that goes down to the edge of the bridge, so that your dirt doesn't erode away down there.
Which bridge was that, was that?
I can't remember which one is which. One was, I think it was Ball Street.
Then how they added in like a side block on that to that?
I think it was Mill and South, we presented, I think, last year, right? Yeah, Mill and South, because South was the decking and Mill was the, was the erosion water.
Yeah, and that still is going along.
Yeah.
From Mill and South Street. One additional question, so is this strictly maintenance, or could beautification be part of this as well?
Strictly maintenance. It's preventative maintenance, but while you have them there, if you want to, you know, if you have them there on site, you could include that as part of the project. Now, they wouldn't pick it up, but you could probably get it at a reduced rate, you know, as part of the package, since they assembled on site.
And the $1,000 is total to the, by?
$1,000 is total for the grant, right.
And when will we know if we get it?
The fall, late fall again.
And once is that line to apply?
May, believe it was May 1st.
That's what I would, yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve local bridge program resolution number 2019-0422-01 for preventiv-, preventative maintenance grant funding for South Street Bridge over Curlichey Creek for the year 2022.
Support.
Discussion. Bill, one last question on this, does a hundred thousand have to be, can we split that, or divide that into three bridges as we?
No, it'll, 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 there'll be specifics for each bridge.
Okay, so there's maybe like a work hard bridge, bridge, exactly what the work can be done on that bridge. Which one, do you know which one's the most expensive on this?
I did, but I'm sorry, I should have brought it with me, but I can, I can catch up and after.
I just want to make sure if we're running after money, that we're running after it for a good reason, that we're not just repairing stuff just because there's money.
No.
I gotta tell you, we got four bridges in this community, and I think they are understated, so between maintenance and beautification, I think we had to highlight those bridges somehow, not necessarily recovered, but, you know, whether it be coating them or painting them, and. Well, I do agree. And renovations too, so, for maintenance, so I think these are good grants. Yeah, I think the Mill Street one definitely needs some work. The other two seem like they have less work to do, but the Mill Street one definitely a little bit.
Again, keep in mind, you're looking three years out, so you have to do some future plan, so it's not, you got three years.
For the amount it's going to cost us, yeah. I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, real quick, Dan made a motion, and you supported for South Street. Is there any further questions on them, or are we going to separate them for questions? We're fine, questions after all three, or do we want?
You gotta take action on.
I know, but I say to everybody, are we good?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Discussion, yes, discussion is over.
All right, so again, Councilman Eshman made the motion, Councilman Skornikoff supported. Can we have a vote, please, for the South Street Bridge? Do you want a roll call? That would be great. Eshman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornikoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Budson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries seven zero.
I'd like to make a motion to approve local bridge program resolution number 2019-422-01 for preventive maintenance grant funding for Mill Street Bridge over Curlichey Creek for year 2022.
It should be point zero two, and the third one should be point zero three, because each one has its own resolution, can't be all the same.
You're correct.
Thank you. That would be repeat oh two, dot oh two. Thank you.
Any discussion on the Mill Street Bridge?
Did you get a support?
I suppose so.
Yes. All right, so hearing none, motion was made by Councilman Eshman, supported by Councilman Hayden for the Mill Street Bridge. Can we have a roll call on that? George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornikoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Budson?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries seven zero. And last up is our Ball Street Bridge.
I'd like to make a motion to approve local bridge program resolution number 2019-0422-03 for preventive maintenance grant funding for Ball Street Bridge over Curlichey Creek for year 2022.
Support.
And all right. Any further discussion on the Ball Street Bridge? Hearing none, because we have a roll call over there. Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Skornikoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Budson?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Our local road improvement pilot grant application is up next.
That's simply the crack ceiling grant that we've got every year for the last, has done a good job the last two years, and they've reissued it, and you see it's for about $145 less than last year, but made a significant impact at increasing the longevity of our roads, both in Mill and South, but it is. And that's a 50/50 grant, so we have to spend at least, they give us $4,554, we gotta spend at least that, you know, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for local road improvement pilot program grant funding for crack ceiling projects in the village, for an amount of $4,554, with village matching funds in minimum of $4,554.
Support.
All right, discussion on the grant money. All right, hearing none.
I got one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Just, why does it say minimum and not maximum in our motion?
Because that's the minimum amount we have to spend.
But if you have a, you know, that they're going to.
And the amount we're looking for is 4,554, right? So I'm going to just be to match that, unless, unless we have a chance to get more than that.
No, we wind up spending more, typically we'll wind up spending just a little bit more than that for various labor, or because you put labor, it's not just material, so we put labor into that too.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? All right, motion was made by Councilman Skornikoff, supported by Councilman Budson, and let's get this roll call over there. Robinson?
Yes.
Skornikoff?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Budson?
Yes.
Eshman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Thank you, motion also carries seven zero. And CISMAs, are next on the list?
The local CISM, or local, the CISM group is asking all the participating communities to have village managers or their highest official sign a memorandum of understanding and participation in the CISM group. That entitles you, that $250 membership fee, which is well within my budget, entitles you to utilize their permits and stuff throughout Oakland County. It also gets you into the roadway treatment program. They're talking about expanding the program this year to include not only right-of-way on Oakland County roads, but add a cost to the local authorities, and you could bring that, for example, in the village, and you could maybe treat right-of-ways for that reduced rate in the village. Now, it would not be grant funded, but you'd be able to obviously take advantage of their permits, take advantage of their reduced rate that they get, and that to treat invasive species on right-of-ways within the village versus just simply in the Oakland County roads.
Are there any costs to participate with this program?
Yeah, there's the cost, $250 to be a member, and then there's, on the Oakland County roads, last year, we got our side of Oakland, of Oakwood, down, down by Cedar Lake, treated for, it would have cost probably, if you tried to treat that little section, you'd see where they killed it, would have been a significant cost, but the total cost as part of this contract was a hundred dollars, so we had to pay a whole $50 to get that area treated. So it's definitely more cost effective than trying to do it on your own, so it'll give us a chance to maybe start treating some invasive species, and public land within the village too. So, and the other thing along with this, it just seems like every time I try to attend one of these meetings, so maybe it was a good idea, but I had Bob attend the last CISM meeting, and he said, oh, they're going to have him be the CISM rep going forward, so that we're having someone at that meeting all the time to pick up the latest, and, you know, that's kind of cutting out the middleman, in my opinion, and he's the guy who's going to manage that process, so.
Where's that help?
Typically, they've been having him down at, what is it, Wald Lake Fire Department down there, and it took about a half hour ride down there, and, so he went to the last meeting, very informative.
Does he have to get certified to treat? Because I know we had the lady from the county here.
Yeah.
A few years ago.
But to be very honest with you, them treating, or our guys treating it, is probably not a good idea because of the personal protective equipment and the things that you need to purchase in order to properly, properly treat this stuff.
They get to be licensed too, to.
You'd have to, you'd have to certify, and I think you're far better off to, you know, yeah, could we go in and manually pull out some of this stuff, and then in certain areas, small areas, and attack those kinds of? these guys are, so they, they're, you know.
And it's, like you say, using, being careful, the environment, using an herbicide versus a pesticide, but still, it can cause issues that you don't want to.
Yeah, there are some places where some of the active ingredients that are actually being canned and cured now, so you know, it's something that you do need to consider about in terms of types of chemicals.
Do we have all the areas marked off that we intend to treat?
No. No. I mean, the biggest areas you want to attack is probably down by, you know, Darren Park, on our property, you know.
Because I brought it up last year, I worked there, treat, one of Larry's property, the school area, there's really bad growth over there, been slowing down, it's actually, it's now.
The bad news is, that's, anything on personal property is the responsibility of the property owners, so anything like that, which is something we kind of talked about before, is once you get, once the strike teams get us under the. The good news is, though, that if you're part of the CISM, my understanding is that the private owners, if they were to hire the contractor, would be covered under their permits, and you wouldn't have to go get a separate permit and all that stuff to treat it, you just hire these contractors as they go through the village and say, hey, Larry and I wanna have you come treat mine.
Yeah, the fact is, it's so pervasive, I don't see that we can really eliminate or stop it from spreading, but I think that in cases where it's causing a problem with drainage and causing, you know, other sorts of problems, we may have to spot a treat that's needed to address where it's causing other problems.
So by signing and agreeing to this, how soon do they start?
They start, treatment typically will come in the fall, so you'd have some time, and, you know, they will do some, some cutting in the springtime, try to get, you know, because there's, some would say if you cut it, there's two schools of thought, but some say if you cut it now, then treat the new growth, that it does a more effective job of treating the roots, and there are other people who say, ah, that's below me, you're just, you're just as good to treat it the other way, you know, just like rather than treat it in the fall.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Hilton County Cooperative Invasive Management Area Memorandum of Understanding.
Support. And motion was made by Councilman Ashman, supported by Councilman Bright. Any further discussion of this? All right, can we have a vote, please? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Did you say?
Oh, I was just saying, it's not too good.
No, fees were in my budget, so.
Not anyone?
Yeah, you wouldn't need that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries seven zero. And next up, we have the Purple Heart Trail signage donation, looking to see if there's an option for us. If you don't mind, Dennis, can you kind of tell us what maybe there are questions?
Um, that was offered from the DFW commander of the O582, and we started working on this Purple Heart Trail sign for Memorial Highway. I started working with Representative Riley in Lansing last February, and it had to be made to a law before you can get the signs made by MDOT. It's just a resolution, they can come along in two years and change it and take the signs down. So we had to make it to a law, and the signs will be state Purple Heart Trail Memorial Highway, there'll be one on each end of the village's limits, north and south, and they are two feet high and six feet wide, and the cost of each sign was two thousand thirty-five dollars fifty-two cents, and that's what MDOT, they do the fabrication and they install them, put any maintenance on them, the DFW has to take care of that, say if somebody runs into it or something, and the guy doesn't, gets away with it, or his insurance company notifying it, we have to replace the sign, then that comes out of our Purple Heart Trail pledge. And we were about fifteen hundred dollars short after the Masons donated five hundred dollars to us a couple of weeks ago, and we took what we needed out of the, our general fund to make up the difference, because we wanted to get the signs in before our Memorial Day or possibly the Purple Heart Day that we have, so we can commemorate the signs. We're the only Oakland County community that will be registered with Purple Heart Trail. Holly's a Purple Heart community, but they're, they never applied for the resolution to become part of the Purple Heart Trail, and there's only nine in the state of Michigan. So I think it'd be a good boost for the community, and gets us on the map, and it's all been done through donations, we haven't had to use any funds except to get the signs this last time, we're, donations now are put back into the Purple Heart Fund, because we have flags that need to be replaced every so often, plus the signs with the names on and stuff, and I got another name called today to be added, an Iraq veteran, so. That is all I have to say, thank you. Any questions?
I'd just like to thank you, that was, I think we put a lot of work and effort into that to make that happen, so thank you.
You're welcome, well-deserving for the veterans who are Purple Hearts.
Agreed.
Thank you, Councilman Ashman.
So, there is a motion with the blank, and so do we have a fund somewhere that we could draw, and we proposed donation?
Well, there's a few, there's some few miscellaneous accounts throughout the various things, that we could probably do some budget adjustments, does the, I don't have my budget paper with me right here, but we can always do a budget adjustment, but there are some miscellaneous accounts, various, you know, under line, and village council.
Knowing that we were going to address this, was there any roundabout figure that we were thinking?
That's all we've got.
So you're, you're short money, though, is correct, I mean, you had to.
Fifteen, well, we had, we had to take it off our general fund.
Right.
But the money you were short was fifteen hundred bucks.
That was after the donation from Mason's of five hundred dollars, yeah.
And where did you get the other two thousand, you said you got two signs, each two thousand some, so where did the other money come from?
We had a Purple Heart Trail Fund, which was all donations.
Oh, okay.
I have another question, did, did the township also give you funds, or are you still approaching that?
I haven't heard a word from the township, so, I don't know, Bill said you were gonna...
I suggest that we hit up the township as well to kick in a little bit, because it is our community to help us.
Although it is, both of the sites, and it is designated in the village, the village is within the township, and that's, that's fair that we both would have the option to be a participant, we don't want to take from them as well. My recommendation was to do half, hoping that, that we need to have.
Seven fifty?
With that said, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but that was, that was my recommendation.
Seventy-seven fifty?
Is that right?
Seventy.
I'd like to challenge them to matching that.
We'll, we'll challenge them tomorrow.
Is that part of the motion?
I don't, do we have a motion?
We have everything to gain.
Yeah.
We have everything to go, to make it happen.
Yeah, I mean, just off the top of my head, thinking about it, the signs two thousand, I was thinking five hundred, similar, like what they've done.
I was thinking five hundred initially, and then the seven fifty.
Yeah, either way.
I'd like to make a motion then, to authorize seven fifty towards the purchase of Purple Heart Trail signage, support.
All right, motion by Councilman Batso, supported by Councilman Robinson, and do we have any further discussion of this? All right, can we please have a roll call? Ashman?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornacass?
Yes.
Bright?
Yes.
Batso?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
I can say, this third of the sign donated by village board.
We look forward to seeing them, thank you very much.
They wouldn't have let us put the DFW across the bolt on there, because they're afraid of patent or infringement rights through the, through the DFW, which the national citizen can't do it itself.
Thank you. Plus, if they have the Purple Heart Day in August added to our calendar, if you don't mind, August first?
First.
First, second to second, thank you. All right, next we have our National Police Week Resolution, and that will be May twelfth, and obviously we do not meet before then, we're doing that now. That is included in your packet, and that will represent National Police Week, which is May twelfth through May eighteenth, and that is to support the wonderful services that are provided to us by our law enforcement agencies.
I just have a question on that, with the resolution, if it's already a national declaration, why are we individually making a declaration for it? It's already, it's already a national declaration that made a blot for beauty team this police week, why are we doing it in the national?
Well, at the national level, they support the state level request, and at the state level, they support community levels, so you just kind of turn the line down, and they, you know, request what we like to support there, and it's obviously good, we just kind of throw it out there.
Air item G, we have our resignation.
Looking to make?
I'm making.
Yes, it's a sad day, unfortunate, or fortunate for me, and unfortunate for me is that last week, while I was on vacation, I was offered a position in the private sector, and offered it multiple times to the point where I finally had to accept, so I look the council know that I would be resigning, my last day in the village will be effective May seventeenth, and I'd be starting my new job on May twentieth. So, it has been a pleasure working here, I appreciate everything that the council's done for me, and appreciate more so the village staff, couldn't ask for a better group of people, Beth, Liz, just doing outstanding job in the office, Matt is kind of what you don't see, is the team works really well together, and one of the things that when we get crazy up front and stuff, Matt pitches in all the time, so it's a, he's an integral part of how the office pulls together as a team, and then I really don't need to say anything more about how good the DPW guys are too, and we're blessed with a great team. Like, in part one, maybe final word of wisdom, is, you know, love those guys to death, because they're carrying water every, every day, and it's tough sometimes, you know, because typically in the office, we're not getting the calls every day, telling us what a great job we're doing, or whatever, it's, you know, hey, I'm late on my taxes, can I do this, my neighbor's got a dog running loose, my neighbor has a fence and his kid keeps hopping over it, you know, the things that you don't hear about, but that you take care of, but, you know, part of that is just getting, kind of getting people to work together and that, so I'm sad to be, sad to be leaving, wanted this to be my retirement job, but, for the last job I have, but just unfortunately, this is just too good to pass up, sorry. Thanks, Bill.
Hate to see you go, but, you know, obviously I always encourage people to go after opportunities when they have, so wish you the best of luck.
I would, I would say, you know, congratulations, really, really it's unheard of to me going where you're going today, and, and obviously, you know, you're, you're well thought of, otherwise they wouldn't be putting that out in front of you, so that's, you should be, you should feel pretty good, though, although I hate to see you lose, yeah, lose you.
Good luck with those payments as well, we know you're valuable, and so do they, so unfortunately, do the short stick.
Appreciate you sticking around a little while longer, maybe to help us through a transition.
So this is your last meeting?
This is, well, no, we need to talk about that.
Oh, well, I feel like council, needing regular, regularly scheduled.
Because the start date they wanted was, don't go home.
Yeah.
So, I said that, that wasn't, that wasn't possible, so, yeah.
I'll see you at least two more.
You got a lot ahead of you to relocate and all of those things, too, so.
So we want to, definitely want to try to get the budget done, and, or at least get it to the point where, you know, we can drive it home, get the master plan rolling, and some other stuff, so.
I think we've all been very fortunate to have you, and we're gonna mission, and but the best of luck to you and your job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I think, I'd have a comment, we'd probably need to schedule those markets at any personnel meeting this semester, if I mentioned that, I believe that you said May first would be available?
I'm available this week and next week, so, I mean, so does the banner, I mean, if you guys want to even meet tomorrow, I could do that.
But I can't meet tomorrow, I think twenty-sixth and May first would be the next two minutes.
What's the first one?
Yeah, I want to look at the same, because my schedules change, so.
I remember the emails, and what we had on that was twenty-sixth.
Council needs to accept the resignation for formality.
And if we don't?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the village manager's Phil Sprague's resignation effective May seventeenth.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Scornacass, supported by Councilman Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Very enthusiastic.
Motion carries against all of our better judgment, we did what was best for you. All right, we will move on to item number thirteen, which begins our unfinished business, and we'll start with the trash hauling update.
Uh, yes, please tell me you got a Portlandville waste project. I think another topic that we probably need to schedule is, Mark, is that any personnel meeting this week's festival? If I mentioned that, I believe that you said May first would be there.
I'm available this week and next week. So, I mean, so does the banner. I mean, if you guys want to even meet tomorrow, I could do that.
But I can't meet tomorrow. I think twenty-sixth and May first would be the next two bits.
What's the first one?
I want to look at the same, because my schedules change, so.
I remember the emails, and what we had on that was twenty-sixth.
Council needs to accept the resignation for formality.
And if we don't?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the village manager's, Bill Sprague's resignation effective May seventeenth.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sorkonka, supported by Councilman Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Very enthusiastic.
Motion carries against all of our better judgment. We did what was best for you. All right. We will move on to item number thirteen, which begins our unfinished business, and we'll start with the trash hauling update.
Yes, please tell me you got a Ortonville Waste Project summary sheet in your packet, too. I didn't see one in mine, unless I sort of got the message.
Is it titled as such?
Yes. You should have, you should have a lot of things that you've already seen, but there should be two sheets of paper in there, Ortonville Waste Hauler Summary Project, that looks like this.
I think that's my fault. Oh, I don't get that.
I should have mentioned earlier.
No, I was still deciding myself with Bill leaving.
Yes, me too.
I think there's one more, I guess.
Well, we can.
I can.
Go over it.
I, huh, I guess, I was, I was in the game time, it's not a time that we have, doesn't look that. I'll just, I'll, here's the packet that you have there. Anything else you have for the trash hauling stuff, you pretty much just passed up. And this is just updated, this stuff. What I basically mentioned here in the summary sheet, again, working on this, it was myself, Mel, and I, Bill Sprague, a lot of discussion with Bill on this, very helpful discussions and that. I appreciate the help you gave me. But basically, just to review it, we know coming in on this, we mentioned the problems we were having on multiple trash haulers, multiple days in a week, excessive deterioration of roads, chronic noise, and curbside light. So that was it. We conducted some phone surveys on surrounding communities, and that's in your packet. So this tech, this sheet here is technically a published sheet on those surveys, and then all the detail behind it is, is those surveys. So we did that in probably mid-January. What did we get out of this? Very significant is the fact was that most communities contract, were contracted with one waste hauler. And Bill, the homeowner, charged through either annual assessment or three months for water bills. So we did that, that was in mid-January. And then, in your package, you've got the, a copy of the informational letter, and the postcards that were sent out to Bill and his residents. And again, I didn't say anything about, about Bill about leaving. We sent out five hundred of these letters, postcards. It was a lot of manual work. And I'll tell you something, when I came in on that Friday, and Bill jumped in right away in the morning, and was with me for pretty much all day, and Bill, I always will remember that, with you, you didn't have to do that, and that was extremely helpful. And at some point, Matt stepped in, you know, see him there now, Matt stepped in, and Liz stepped in. So with their help, we got about four hundred of those out on Friday, and another one hundred out, so that or get Bill, I just really appreciate the help you gave me and that. So, again, on that, we were just listing on an informational flyer, the advantages of going to a single waste hauler for when we were looking at them, and we approved the postcard for citizens to vote yes or no on the proposal. And we mailed those out on March first. Be nicer than me, have us in front of you. Then, what you do have in your packet, which I assume most of us have seen before, according to my mailbox, on March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, I saw a attachment to my mailbox on the outside, a letter from Community Disposal Service from Brian and the crew, pretty close to two pages. And that, and I say on that to summarize that, obviously, he was expressing concern that they would not be able to compete price-wise with the larger trash haulers if we put this out for bid, and therefore did not want to participate in the bidding process. Ouch. All right. So that was interesting. And obviously, through some remote appearance in that side of things, but it was, it was fine. We then had the public meeting, information meeting, on March twenty-first. So again, the timeline on this was, this letter from Brian from Community Disposal was, I think a lot of residents got it two days earlier, March eleventh. But anyway, on the public meeting on March twenty-first, we had that to discuss the trash proposal. Twenty-six residents, we had attended that. And their main concerns, I think people that were there would agree with me, a lot of them wanted to keep their regular choice, choose their own trash haulers, and the big thing was to be able to retain community as a waste hauler. So that was on March twenty-first. We counted, we let the postcards come in through April the fifth. The final count on the postcards, the yeses and the nos, we got about two hundred twenty-two responses out of the five hundred we sent out. Fifty-five percent were yes on a single waste hauler, and forty-five were no. Now, what I included in the yes on this, which I'm abasaded from what I said before, my yes votes on the final count included a fair number of people who wanted, did want one waste hauler, but Bill, he said they wanted community. I thought, they're basically saying they want one waste hauler, and then with community, they want them. So fifty-five, forty-five on the yeses versus nos. I will say, as time went on, as far as the single waste hauler, I think about twenty-two additional votes that came in. On those, I think it was like fifteen no and seven yes for a single waste hauler. I believe, again, in Brian's letter, it will install a lot of people on those latter votes to say that all we want to keep one, one waste haulers, and basically what they're saying is that they want to keep community. So conclusions and recommendations. We know, and I know Conyn's medicine is before, but she wished to not talk to Brian, but Community Disposal has at least sixty percent of the business, and so that's a conservative number of all the trash hauler business in Ortonville. People like them, and they want to stay with them. So that being the case, Bill, on a recent meeting, and it said before, we can do away with all this bidding stuff, just simply put in ordinance, and the ordinance would limit the trash hauler to one day a week, which at least is an improvement. So preferably, I think Monday would be the preferable day. I believe the day of that. So I must think, we love Friday, but Monday is the preferable day. And Bill said, hopefully, Bill, the time you have left, relatively easy to write that ordinance, that we're going to limit trash haulers coming in on one day, and I'm almost done here. I would also like to limit the trash haulers myself to four, and that's currently what we have. We did have five, but with odd jobs out of it, we're down to four. So all four that are currently serving the village would be included on them on that Monday. They would just, Bill contacted them, and they said yes, that they would agree, if the ones that were picking up on Fridays would agree to vote Monday. So we're really not cutting anybody out with this. And then what I would like to see, what we would like to see, I think Bill agrees with this part, is begin to license these improved waste haulers. They give an annual fee of two hundred fifty bucks a year to do business in our village. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. Right now, we don't have any regulations or fees on them, but if we were charged two hundred fifty bucks a year for licensing, and from a current standpoint, that would do it. So that's, that's where, where we're at right now on this. And Bill, I have.
The only disagreement I would have with Pat is, and I would, I would tell you, really don't do it, is limit the number, is, is limit the days, don't limit the number, because if you limit the number, you then have to set up a system for picking who the numbers are, and get into all sorts of goofy stuff. So I'm fully in, fully in support of, yeah, preparing an ordinance that says, you know, you pick up trash on Mondays, and you weave in holiday language to say, okay, if you don't like Memorial Day, they pick it up on Tuesday. You do it the day after the normal Monday. Most that I talked to, TNR, talked to, Advance, talked to Waste Management, talked to Community, all of them said, yeah, that's fine. If you go one day, yeah, we'll have to redo our routes, we give us enough time to redo our routes and stuff, and said, yeah, you know, we could give you thirty, sixty days, something like that, from the time. Plus, they would have time from the time that you, you know, put forth, they have a public hearing on it, and then enact it, you know, they probably have two teams worth of forewarning, you know, to do that. So that should be, be easy to put together, one, one day a week, I tell you. The hard part, the literature you have to put in, if you do the limiting, you would have to put in the selection criteria that they have. Marijuana shops and garbage haulers, they tell you, don't, but, you know, let the process, natural process, we did so well.
Sorry, goal has been to get this down to one day. If all of the haulers agree to one day, we're done. We don't need to do anything else. We don't need ordinances, we don't need permits, we don't need anything. They're going to agree, we allow it. If somebody has a problem with it, then we can look into creating something to force them. But if they're all in agreeance, what do we need to do?
They agreed that they could accommodate it if we made an ordinance to make it on one day. They didn't say they're running.
They would. We've already talked with them, year and a half ago, two years when we started this, we all talked to them, they were all in agreeance, they would move to whatever day we picked. That was why he moved to Monday, was because that's what we were looking at. But they're all happy to move, they all would like to keep their business, they all would like to be in our community, and they would be happy to comply.
Because I recall that they said, yeah, if you guys say, if you guys put out an ordinance that it's one day, we would be able to accommodate it. I don't recall them saying, they would do it just freely on their own accord, so I thought that we did.
Because there's nothing there to adhere to, there's nothing there to.
Right, and then as soon as a new trash hauler comes in, who's, what's going to keep them from just starting up on one day? So I think we still need the ordinance to put it on one day, and they've agreed that they can accommodate that, so I don't, I think the ordinance is still important to have.
Kat, is, I'm sorry, Larry, I don't know, I'm sorry, were you done?
No, you go back. First, I got a different question for you.
Okay, I just had a question for you, you mentioned about the two hundred fifty dollars. Did you find during your research that that's what other communities were doing? Was that something?
That's a swag, scientific knowledge, yes.
Hi.
It seemed like a good amount.
And that was before the two hundred, what would they get them?
You know, we give them the privilege of serving as a community, picking up our trash. Yes.
Okay, I was just curious where that, where that came from.
Plus, of course, in the register.
Yeah, I did have a question, too, whether other communities had similar licensing for trash haulers or not. I think that before we did that, we wanted to make sure.
Or maybe we're going to do the trailblazer, and now everybody else will copy us, right? And they're going to say, well, if we can get the two fifty for the annual, then they're going to, they're going to be trailblazing.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
They can have annual fees. Some even have annual fees plus annual inspections, which we're not equipped to do, so.
The question I was wondering is, I know several years back, this topic also was back with the planning commission looking at it. At that time, I thought they said the most common trash pickup date was Friday, you know, there were more people around.
Yeah, a good one.
And I'm wondering, do we know what the percentage of pickups are on Monday versus Monday versus Friday is?
Well, because communities got, you know, doing the bulk of the business, and they're picking up on Mondays, we know at least sixty percent of the third chances being picked up on Monday.
So if the majority is on Mondays, then that makes sense.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the impact's going to be, but I read while I was last week, like out on the trip, that Waste Management purchased Advance nationwide for two point nine billion dollars, I think it was. So there may be a, maybe down to three dollars, now TNR has new new waste management.
I think if we can have some consensus, I'd like to see Bill just initiate for the success for the process of drafting ordinance for a single pickup day.
I agree. Do you bother your head a lot for success or to do it?
Well, to start the process.
You said that it should be too much effort to initiate that, right? So we'll pull something together.
I mean, we got a lot of other fish on the plate that you, Brian, before you move on, so.
If we could just get the summary that Kat was referring to. Sorry about that.
Thanks, John, Ben.
Any further discussion? Next up is the conflict between the Master Plan Workshop and the VGYA Awards on this Thursday, March twenty-fifth.
I didn't have one eye for you guys.
And I was going to say, so that, that we made a meeting to continue to wrap up the Master Plan with the workshop, and that was inadvertently scheduled on the same night as the VGYA Awards, and for looking for a recommendation or consensus to move that, so.
With Bill already meeting in that, and the Master Plan, we're almost done. I'd really like to see you go to it.
As long as we have a quorum, I think we should.
Yeah, the only thing, the, the big question, the big question you would have coming out of that meeting, now, I did get feedback from McKenna that the only, and we're down to the appendix now, okay. You should not modify any of the appendix. The only one that has to be included with the Master Plan is Appendix D, which, excuse me, I can't remember what that is now.
Pastor to the Zelting covenant.
Yeah, I believe so. And then the other ones, you, you don't throw away or nothing, you just very simply say, they're always on file, and information's on file, so you just put a brief sentence or comment in that says, you know, something that, you know, this is how this information was gathered, and it's available for review in the office. And so it's, you know, so you don't have to go through. And you should not change any of the surveys or their answers, because.
Well, I know it wasn't.
Right, wrong or different, if they spelt stuff wrong, it was wrong, it is what it is.
From the planning commission aspect, I know, and obviously, you are correct, we would not in any way, shape, or form try to alter any of the data, but some of the way the formatting and the way the data was presented, to make it a little more clear, I think we made a few, suggest minor changes in the appendix sections related to some of the ways that they portrayed the data. That was a, it is.
It's all informations that need change. The format of something could be.
Yeah, I think that was about the only thing the planning commission, that there's a few things that couldn't format or move up clearly, or the way they described what the table was about was, I think, quite a bit, or something, that was about it, probably the planning commission, where the appendix is.
So if we move to only include Appendix D and file the rest of the appendices, do we really have to have them described?
I don't think there's any move to do that tonight, because it tells you what the. Just because the Master Plan is not on the agenda.
But it's not, would it be, it would be a recommendation, not necessarily a motion. The recommendation is, we've made all of these recommendations, and this is one more, correct?
Right.
I'm saying, we can all, we can all meet and decide, we'll just leave Appendix D in there and omit and file the rest for reference.
I, that's what you're saying.
But I, we're digressing somehow, I mean, isn't the topic whether or not we should have a meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Right.
I think, I think a little bit further now.
Right, literally, we can discuss it in the meeting Thursday.
Yeah, and I was, I was saying that the, the content of the meeting.
It should be relatively short.
Thursday should be real short, because it's decide what the recommendations is, do you keep it as reference or.
We can finalize things up and have it done on Thursday prior to, because the planning commission is meeting.
Yeah, it's following.
And so it would be really nice to have that done, and that's what that.
And Liz has done a yeoman's job of doing all the strikes and stuff, she's up to, you know, about where, you know, so by the, by Thursday, we should be kind of ready to send it back to the planning commission.
Okay, so from my view, I think that we should probably keep it Thursday, so we can finalize these topics.
Well, they have a meeting.
Yep. I will not be there, I will be at VGYA Awards.
I will be here, too.
And that will be the Master Plan Workshop on April twenty-fifth, at six thirty PM at the village offices, and that will be, I didn't say six AM. C is the conflict of interest policy. I'll have a copy of that in a second. And I make a motion to approve the village of Ortonville conflict of interest policy as presented.
Support. Support.
Second.
And can we have the discussion on that?
I'd like to ask a question, how, how, where was the content, the poll to draft this policy? So was it the standard policy used?
M M L, I pulled it right, basically, cribbed the most, 99% of it out of the M M L handbook that we already got.
Page 33.
Footnotes and stuff, where I pulled it from. Plaid your eyes to head, but we gave them credit.
And I had discussed this earlier with, with Bill as well, and he's going to, because we need a policy on social media and representation to media in general, so he's going to work on, give us a policy on that as well.
Any further discussion on this? All right, a motion was made by Councilman Bryce, supported by Councilman Hayden. Can we have a vote on that, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries, seven to zero.
So I'm proud you'll only have, if I, unless I get, I'll get them done, but I won't see them approved, hopefully. But you'll only have two policies that the auditor says that you need to take care of now. You have this one done, and the other one is written at the personnel committee on fraud. And then should be a real short one on basically continuing operations in the event of a tragedy, business continuity. Business continuity plan. If anybody had any questions on my village manager report, I do want to thank Beth and Liz for completing the, if you guys recall back in 2016, I'll started a scanning of all the property files, and we had those boxes around the offices that were sitting around the heat of the audit, and so we could get rid of them. And Beth and Liz, when they had spare moments, had, had boxes by their desks and did it all in their, for lack of a better term, free time. And on Fridays a lot, we weren't as busy, and we filled the shred barrel a couple times, but that project is important, so. And we appreciate their, their help, that was good team effort, so.
Yeah, I did notice that pot open that Phil's, which I'm not my thanks for the V G Y A report taking care of that.
Probably corner of the old street.
Yeah, it seemed that there was some pets thrown in there to.
To soften the edge there, which is less dangerous.
I'd like to just comment on the village manager report, so good update, Bill. And with, in light of not your resignation notification, is it possible to put a summary list together of active, no kidding, projects that you've been working on, and then, and then the, okay, yeah, complete what each follow-up on, and, you know, maybe things or whatever to help with the transition?
Piggybacking off of that, I would like to suggest that we schedule a meeting for the budget meeting, so that we can get that going, because since he's going to be leaving, we need to have a budget well into the stage of that before he leaves, so. I think we need to get that scheduled sooner than later as well.
That's true, since he's also been working on capital improvement plan, which ties in with.
Right, capital improvement plan and budget are two things.
Bill, do you have a recommendation on when we might, or.
I think that, that if you go for Mondays, the 13th is, is the next Monday that we're kind of free. The only days I plan on being out of the office is the first and second day, because I got a procedure I got to have. So, and then I have a meeting up in Hopear the first Monday.
If we schedule it for the 13th, will, will you already have that, some stuff already for us to review by that point?
Yeah, I mean, I've got, I've got some stuff already started, I got to get Beth to drive home some things. I think where you, where we need to focus, she's a little worried about the revenue side, and I'm like, don't worry as much about the revenue side, if we're a little, a little off there in the expenditures and making sure that we get the projects that we want to do in the budget. You know, there's always going to be things that come up, but.
Concerned with the revenue being on the low side versus high, I mean.
No, just, she's, like, I love it, she's an accountant, and her and engineers are black and white and tend to sometimes be a little too exact. And, you know, you're going to, you're going to have a pretty good idea where the revenues are at, you know, but they're not going to change like your statutory revenue to get from the state. You might get a little more, as long as you're conservative, you know, your budget should be fine. What you don't want to do is, or sit there and go, wow, they're talking about 20% increase, and it doesn't develop. Right, also, while it's sound, if you're conservative on revenues, you know, and boost up your expenses, typically it won't get into too much trouble. Makes sense, so.
So what, so we stay in the 13th, or what do we, what do we do?
Unless you guys want to meet sooner, or I can shoot out, I can shoot out, as soon as I've got something, shoot out preliminary to you guys and give questions, or what would really help, if there are specific projects that you want to talk about at budget time, you know, that have been sitting there, but, you know, that you want to go. We know we didn't get the scrap tiger grant this time around, so. I'm not aware of any big grants that, that would be out there for roads right now that we can get before I leave or before budget time. We could lock up, because we even shouldn't keep pursuing them. But, you know, if you've got projects that you want to put in there, let me know. And you don't have to wait for a meeting to do that. I mean, if you just send them, then we can talk about them all together. It'd be easier to talk about them on the 13th than if you just put them in.
But when it comes to roads, I remember that there's this road curve cycle in terms of repair, that if you catch it before it starts getting past a certain point, then you can save it. So any of our roads that are reaching that point, breaking the point of the curve, I think that if you could maybe rate a couple of those who are attached, and make sure that we can keep those in our targets, and any ones that are too far down, we can always postpone those, because they're always going to be even more worse.
Bob and I talked about that a little bit from a standpoint of, and I wanted to talk to Dan about that too, and maybe trying to, maybe we find a couple roads, because part of, a lot of communities are having success doing like crack chip sealing and micro sealing on roads. It doesn't make it perfect, but Mark, you know, like they did with Gen Z here, you know.
Worked out real nice.
It works out, it works out real nice and sloppy for a couple days, but it, it's like, for lack of a better term, it's almost like crack sealing the whole road. You know, you put down this clean road, you put down, you know, some gooey, kind of like gravel, tar type stuff, and then you roll it with this thin seal, so you're not tearing anything up. You might fix some little sections or something for you, but, and it's, you know, a very small percentage. So what might, what might be a good project to check is do exactly what you're talking, maybe you take like a Crescent Hill or pick, you know, some small street or something, try doing that, but it's not too far gone, and see if, see how, see how it works out.
Yeah, because that can extend the length of that road before the road bed starts getting impacted, if it gets too broken up. And that can save a lot of money.
Yeah, and they get on the roads, water, denture.
Not to mention the ones in Hopear, they did really nice, they came out great, and they don't, they don't have nearly the weight and tonnage on our roads that, that the road builders talk about. And it's really pretty good, really nice.
I'm kind of with the 13th, as long as, you know, that's going to give you time, so that it's going to be pretty much, you know, a complete document as you can, other than our input, because that's the Monday before.
Well, and if you got input, like I said, please, you know, if you got a project, shoot it to me, don't wait for the 13th, and then we'll, or if there's a specific, maybe I can shoot out a copy of where we're at right now on the budget, so if you have questions on certain things, I'll email out, that does an update of where we stand with this year's budget.
You don't, you don't think that we would need to meet some time next week to do it, and then another meeting on the 13th or second draft?
What's next week?
Next week is the 29th, 30th, the first, second.
29th, editor?
The 29th is the joint professional development day. 29th is the joint professional development day for social media.
Okay, well, we have, you know, the 29th, we could do that, for those not attending that.
I couldn't be there on Tuesday.
You can't do Monday?
I could do Monday, but not Tuesday.
And then that would give us, then that would give us, you know, the 29th and then the 13th, two, what do you think about that?
I'll talk to you guys.
I think, I think planning two workshops is better than one.
Yeah, especially, I would, I would suggest that we, we work something in for next week, the 29th, and then that gives you time to do something that we can review it again on the 13th. That's my.
I'm sure we can look and see, there's got to be other dates that we can figure out. On the 29th of social media, I actually will be out of town, so.
So it actually will work out, we might have to have to reschedule that.
Yeah, because you need my computer for that anyway, so. And we'll just figure it out on the day.
Do we need a motion to schedule these meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like to make a motion that we schedule a budget workshop meeting for Monday, April 29th at 6:30? And a budget workshop meeting Monday, April, no, I'm sorry, May 13th, at 6:30.
Support.
And I'm sorry, just sub right there.
Will this be a 6:30 or a 7 o'clock meeting?
6:30. Is that 6:30 or something?
Both of them are 6:30. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Skornica, two dates for the budget workshop, and supported by Councilman Ashman. Any other questions, please, Councilmen's? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries, seven to zero. And Silbo, would you have a draft of that before the 29th, or we'll get the draft on the 29th? Okay.
I'll give you a first draft, but if you, if you guys want anything included, shoot it to me right away, like, you know, if you're looking for costing or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
That's great, okay.
All right. And item number 15 will be our public comments, and those will be on anything that is on agenda items. Anybody have anything for us?
Dennis Hoffman, D F W, post 582 commander. I just want to thank the council for visiting and funds for our Purple Heart Trail Signs. And our annual Purple Heart Day is August 1st for the community, or national, I believe it's on the 9th. And everyone wants snowfall, why, you know, but each community has their own Purple Heart Day, so. I mean, Maine has one, it's in December, so, whatever day the, the community's thick, that's, you know, I'd rather have it in the summertime.
Will, will there be anything just to recognize that on that day, though?
Yeah, we're.
Pray, or?
No, we've been having a Purple Heart Day at the library, at the community room there, over the past three years. And I think this year's going to be on the second or third, because the room's already been booked. But it'll be in the, I haven't been citizen before with the date, once the signs are up, we'll have a dedication of the signs. And I'll get ahold of Representative Riley to come out, since he was a big help for me, so. I'm very well intended to, yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, we are on items from trustees. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? We'll start down with Colleen.
I, I don't have anything. I guess I'm going to be meeting with Bill and Liz in the next week or so to go over the I T, the computer, software information that we have there, and the website, and that's it.
Excellent, please.
I have a few items. First of all, I brought it up last month about issues with parking on sidewalks or adjacent. I've noticed, especially on my walks that I've been taking, I got pictures of cars just blatantly like parked in the middle of the sidewalk and that. And we really do need to address this, like I said, I have, people in the village have approached me with concerns as far as vehicles parked alongside the road right there with the sidewalk, and they're worried about abductions and that kind of stuff, you know. And somehow I think that we need to address this. And then also, I had a visit from Ron Sutton earlier today with his concerns about the drainage issues. I spoke with Bill earlier, and Bill, it'd be best if you kind of brought us up to speed, you know, like some of the things that we talked about, our potential, I mean, because otherwise we're going to get a lot of money to power Riley.
The big, the big, the big, I don't know, drain Detroit now, basically is that Cedar Street corner where it drains the park, all drains this, drains this way and so forth, and those guys, you see them, they pump that out still to try to reroute it through another drain. When we had our estimates of basically putting a new trap, or putting a new unit down and drilling out the creek, it was like $150,000. Good news is the gentleman who is right next to that drain is now putting in a new septic tank over there, so we've, I've talked to him, and we're going to see if, in their endeavors, if we can find that drain and why it's collapsed, or whatever it's done. So that is something if we decide we got to do, we need to look at some alternatives. I'm not aware of any grants specifically for redoing that service. There are loans available, probably. The other thing is that I've had a couple of the people, there may be grants for bio swales. What you would do, if we could get it right away, you would run like a drain over to the other side of Cedar Street, and you'd run that underground, and then you would take and have the pipe come out above ground and run into like a little aqua garden type thing that would run down to the creek. So purify the water versus running straight, going straight from, and there are potential grants for that. So if we could pursue something like that, you could put in a bio swale potentially to purify the drain problem. It may be as expensive, but the radical cover part, you know, so.
Yeah, because this has been a really big outgoing problem for years. I, I know when I spoke to Ron earlier today. I spoke to Ron earlier today, you know, his big concern, because they get some real bad back flooding, not only is it in the parking, but it's also in their backyard, going up to their like pool house area and all that, and, you know, and we're responsible for the drainage, so we really do need to be doing something before some extensive damage happens, and let alone the park, you know, and the dry out time that takes after you remove the flooding, and so, we could give something a little bit forward on this.
I thought we had cleaned that drain out.
We did.
Well, that's the drain where they lost the bit, everybody thought they lost the cam, no, they lost the bit, and they just can't, nobody seems to be able to find where it died.
It's like a dark hole down there.
Yeah, because everybody's saying, well, it's just, and it's so deep on this side is what's caused the problem, you know, part of my question was, could we reroute some of that water across to a distant drain field versus running it that way to, you know, that may be something that, you may not get the hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, but maybe what we can do is, is do spend some money on engineering and come up with an alternative to, you know, is there an alternative to drain that in some other direction, you know, and, problem is how we got it laid out right now, it's so darn deep, but, you know, the, the crack that you would have to put down there to then shoot it up to, up to the creek, it's not that traverse there that's quite as, is like forty, fifty thousand dollars to put that crack in, you know, and then have that open to where you can shoot it all the way out, you know, because it's so darn deep.
So your issue with the parking, should that be referred to as the street committee?
Yes. If you guys could address that.
Thank you.
And then I have one more, I know, I know, you know, Bill's been with us for about a year, you know, at this point, and I know that we originally had a posting for his position, you know, that you guys put together, you guys being, you know, Tanya and, and I'm just wondering, that's something we can duplicate, so we can get the posting out there right away, to where we can start working on filling his position.
The office should have the posting. The office should have the posting, then they can just...
Can we just do that, you know, and get it going?
Just change the dates of what, snow wants the deadline.
Let me know where you want it posted to, do we, I mean, do we want to do MML, the newspaper, the website?
Same as before, right?
That would be my suggestion.
Yep. That will also buy us some time, you know, before we meet, when we can get the ball rolling.
May it make sense, the sooner the better.
Go ahead, clean it up, poster.
Yep.
Just have one night, big shoes to fill.
All right, I'm off, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I do just want to, again, recognize our SIRK team and our community grant, community SIRK team, because they do support all these events we have in our community here, and we've got four coming up that may actually be free in our community, and one that's a joint exercise with the county where we participate in. We do have the DFW parade permit house, our SIRK team is already prepared to support that, and we'll be supporting the EDA's event with the garden show that's coming up also. There's, there's the book and a prayer library run that's coming up, that also is, is going to be supported by our SIRK team, and these guys do a great job, I'm a member of the team, but our volunteers there do a great job, and I just always want to support them and encourage anybody who wants to look for a way to support our community to consider volunteering for SIRK, and that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Yep, good enough, good.
All right, and the only other thing I had was, BGYA requested that we mention their Wojo's fundraiser, and that will be Saturday, June first, Sunday, June second, just a reminder, there are three locations, Ortonville, Davis, and Lake Orion, so share with your friends and family that might live in those areas as well, and that would be a great day to help and support them.
Is that posted on the website?
Our website?
It's on our Facebook page, but I put it on the website, if you want, here it's all.
That's all, is there anything for you?
Motion by Councilman Skornika, and supported by Councilman Hayden.